Welcome, everybody, to November tenth, twenty twenty-two, Rachel Republicans in Commission meeting. Let's go to get started. Chair Salazar Hall. Let's do a quick roll call of Commissioners for present. Should we start with Commissioner Andrew?
Steve Andrew, you're present. Steve Johnson, present.
Andy Hawkins, present.
Olusas Solovy, present.
Commissioner online. Let's start with you, Darlene. Darlene, can you hear me? Will you say your name and present?
Oh, sorry about that. Dolly McDonald, present. It's a little bit of an echo, so that's... I have a little difficult time if you're not directly in front of the microphone there. It may need to be a little bit closer to whoever's speaking because you could pick up the echo in the room.
Can you hear us? May I use a bit some slack? Thank you. How about now? Can you hear it a bit better?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Who else is online?
Luna and Lysia, or Commissioner Benari and Commissioner Satini.
It appears that Commissioner Satini is present.
And Commissioner Under. We see you, Luna, but you're on mute.
Oh, my God. Yes, I'm in conference.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. We can... Let's go to the open dialogue portion of the meeting, which is, we may raise topics and discuss current events. I am thinking that we should move this to the end of the meeting. Do we have a motion to move the open dialogue portion of the meeting to the end of the meeting?
I have a motion.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's... Do we have any members of the public present?
We do not.
Okay. So for now, since we don't have any members of the public present for public comment, we will skip to approve and adopt the minutes from February, March, April, May, June, August, September, and October. Has everyone had a chance to review those meeting minutes? Do we have a motion to adopt those minutes?
I just have a quick moment.
Yes, Commissioner Benari.
I did see my name not present in absent or present in some of the minutes. If that can be reviewed and corrected.
So with those corrections made, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes.
You have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the... Is it from Mayor Mendenhall in our five-year priorities discussion?
We're going to pull them up from the report.
Right.
So just pulling that up and just updating the mayor. We'll have the full reports due after the December meeting because there's still some additions. But they have... The commission has took together some of the priorities for the next five years.
Do you mind blowing that up?
Yeah, because I can't even read it.
I know.
Right between my ears and like... You got it as prescription.
Okay. The... The... Picture of this.
Yeah, yes. Always the... Oh, yes. There we go. If you want to all the five years. So I know that you want to talk about some of the priorities for next year.
Yeah. Right. Can we... I don't have this memorized.
It's okay. So I know that 2023 is basically outlined all here. This is all of 2023.
Right. There's a lot for 2023 that we have. Phase two has primarily been implementing our recommendations from our phase one recommendations. It has been a lot of data gathering, monitoring of programs. The... And we've broken it down by subcommittee. So the training subcommittee, of course, is focused on collaborating with the community-based trainers of color so that we can develop training that is culturally sensitive and based on the neighborhoods and the history of the neighborhoods to enhance policing in Salt Lake City. We've been working on reviewing the Park Rangers program, working closely with the people who are working on that program to ensure that those Park Rangers have everything they need to make that program successful. Of course, we've been partnering with the Chief Federation Officer and the individuals from the Utah Office of the Courts, Administrative Office of the Courts for best practices in juvenile courts. There are several... Yes, Mayor. Is that... That's an action that you intend to take or is that a current partnership that will continue? That is a partnership that we have been developing and we intend to continue. Now, we've developed it in 2022. We've been working with them. They've presented with us of what they're working on and want to make sure that our actions are collaborative with what the courts are working on as well because they do closely align. That's great. I was curious about their interest in collaboration. They are very, very interested. As you know, the Third District is one of the largest districts in Utah. It encompasses Summit, Tooele, and Salt Lake County, and Salt Lake County is one of the most populous counties in the state. The Administrative Office of the Courts created their... This program to address access to the courts that specifically addresses DEI. Their program head contacted me. We've been to lunch. We've talked about the similar priorities that the two programs have, that this commission has with what they're working on, and we're working on making sure that we don't duplicate services, duplicate efforts, and really work on that collaborative effort. And they are very much in line with what we want to do here. I look forward to results. Me too. I am too, yes. We've talked specifically about the struggles that Salt Lake City has been having with determining how Salt Lake City's youth are being... Are interacting with the courts because that is very difficult data to parse out. The way the courts keep track of things is by district. And of course, Salt Lake City is just one small part of the Third District. So we are working with them to see if we can perhaps extrapolate that data from the district-wide set of data that also includes West Valley, South Jordan, Mill Creek, Rose Park everywhere, and make sure that we have that data and know how to... How it... How our youth are impacted within the Third District, either positively or negatively. So far, the data out of the Third District is not great. It's not great for our youth of color. It's actually very, very, very poor. The outcomes and the changes that were made to the juvenile code have had worse impacts on children of color in Salt Lake County. But we don't know if that's Salt Lake City youth or if it's youth outside of Salt Lake City proper. Absolutely. The School Safety Subcommittee has been working with the Senior Education Advisor. Well, first, we worked on hiring the Senior Education Advisor. Jennifer Newell was hired, and she has been a fantastic support in generating, reestablishing the memorandum of understanding, renegotiating it, making sure the terms that are important to this commission are included in that MOU. And of course, that is a very heavy lift. We worked very hard on establishing what those priorities would be for this commission and then handing them off to Ms. Newell to negotiate with Salt Lake City Police Department and Salt Lake City School District. That is ongoing. We... I figured this would be a heavy lift, and it has been. But Ms. Newell is doing a very good job. Also exploring additional fiscal support for the promising youth program, Pure Court and other programs that are targeting youth in Salt Lake City. From everything we've heard, those programs are doing very well, and we're excited to see them continue to thrive. Now, we've been working on developing relationships between Salt Lake City Police and other youth programs in the city, and I know Ms. Newell's been working on that as well and doing a very good job. The Policy and Practice Subcommittee has also been hard at work at implementing that implicit... The internal agency-wide implicit bias study. And we would like to see it every five years, but again, implementing that is going to be... Is difficult because we want to make sure it's done correctly. If questions are worded, even a word can make a difference in how a question is responded to. So we've been very careful to make sure that that implicit bias study is done correctly. And so we've been exploring partnerships with the University of Utah to do the research because they've done similar research in the past with good results and working on producing and providing a timeline for how funding is going to work for that. We're working on studying the crime reduction around gun violence prevention and research and evaluating the national best practices for policing. We've been looking at new works specifically. And I've not been as involved personally in the Policy and Practice Subcommittee. So if there are questions specific to what the Policy and Practice Subcommittee has been, I would defer to those committee members. And finally, we want to follow up with Salt Lake on... Salt Lake City Police Department on all of these wonderful things. So Chief Brown, I'm very glad you're here. The expansion of the field training officer positions, funding for the CIT programs, recruitment efforts, hiring committee, internal affairs process expansion, that implicit bias survey that we discussed, that we're still working on ensuring that we have a good... A good dataset to go for that or a good set of questions, addressing the staffing shortages. I know that is an ongoing struggle, particularly with mental health professionals, the call diversion response, the civilian response team, and developing that business community engagement officer position.
And I think you'll see here too, Mayor, is that SLCPD has been doing so much. And I think, like, understanding this next phase this year, what the commission has realized is like, one or two of these things, the chief has been working on them, and realizing, like, still ongoing all the work as we before, but it's just taking that first stage with a lot of the recommendations.
Well, and many of these recommendations are long-term recommendations that will take likely five years to implement and probably even longer to realize the benefits of. So we realize that none of these are going to be done overnight. And we realize that when we made the initial recommendations in phase one, these aren't going to be done overnight. They're going to take a long time to even implement and even longer to see any sort of results from.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Please.
That's a lot.
It sure is. We realize that.
And we're up for it.
The five-year plan. Five years.
Five years.
All right. Let me just... Remember last year when we took all the recommendations and we color-coded them? Green, the ones we have accomplished, yellow were working, and five were more to do. Andy and I were working on...
There we go.
We have a new one ready to go. We have 2022 almost ready to go, and we'd love to sit down with you and say, these recommendations have now moved from yellow to red.
That'd be fantastic.
But it would take almost a whole meeting because it's quite a lot to go through.
So this number is all you, Chief?
There we go.
Right.
That's an easy way that you can visually just see what's moving through the process.
Right. And that list does look daunting. It does look impossible. And... But we... When we put that list together, we realize that, yes, this looks very intimidating. But knowing that that list comprises of recommendations and steps that are going to take many, many, many years to get through. We understand that, which is why we've broken it down into here.
I mean, it's a lot, but yeah.
It is.
I might get through it, you know what I'm saying?
We... You can't change the entire culture of a city in policing overnight with just one or two recommendations.
Yeah, but I wanted to keep the commission on board with where we're at and what we're doing so you can see that as we move forward.
Absolutely. We do appreciate that, and we do know that that is a heavy lift for you, and we're not expecting this change to happen overnight, but I do appreciate that for sure. So yes, so this is where we're showing that our actions are in progress, recommendations not yet complete or under evaluation. And so there are a lot that are not yet complete, still under evaluation, need a lot more time, and issues that... Recommendations that do affect not just Salt Lake City but may require additional assistance on the state level, county level, that, of course, are out of... A lot mostly out of our control and that we just need to be persuasive with. Tell me about the call diversion list. I know that we are doing call diversion. Are you working with 911? Stephen, who runs 911. I... Yes. So the call diversion would be partially working with Dispatch to divert calls, not just straight to a law enforcement response, but to CIT, to maybe it's a neighbor dispute that civilian team can handle. That's what we're working on. That is one of those heavy lifts that is going to take a number of years to really work on and fully implement because of the training that's involved. We... And we've begun, but I guess I wondered, or you could follow up with me, but I'm wondering what the recommendation is compared to what Dispatch is doing right now with call diversion, which we started maybe, I don't know, a year ago or maybe eleven months ago.
So maybe we have them come a couple of months ago, and so we can follow up with them this...
Yeah.
This next year and well...
Because I'd like to know how much more we can do. Not... I mean, the staffing issues, that's an ongoing component of the formula, but yeah, let me know what else we can do that we get to achieve on that one. And another one of our challenges, Mayor, and this is a good time to bring it up, is not bugging a lot of these departments too often because we know that it's... Yes, here's our recommendation, and we go to Dispatch saying this is what we want to see, but we also don't want to keep bugging them every month saying, what else have you done? What else have you done? Because we don't want to distract them from their work. So we haven't... We've been trying to be sensitive to their schedules and what they need to be successful, but also balancing that with our need to know what's going on. So it's been a bit of a balancing act for us of how quickly do we bug them again to get an update. I think that as we get into the new year, we'll start looking at revenue in January and begin putting early budget structures together in February. And so to have your recommendations and the specifics about what... And obviously, you versus a department director may have slightly different opinions about what's achievable in a year or two years, but getting up those so that when I go into the budget discussions early on with those department directors and can bring the recommendations from your work as an expectation and let them incorporate those if they haven't yet, this will be really helpful. So thank you for getting... What's a good deadline for that? Because we can... I think the end of January at the latest would be ideal.
I think too that that was one of the recommendations in terms of structuring for this commission was that we work with SLCPD, and maybe we should add, I don't know, for those budgetary questions to happen that are very late. So that's perfect. I think we're in line too with what the mayor should be.
Yeah, I think so too. That's... I think what we had planned on too is contacting them again for an update.
Yeah. Okay. I'll put that on at the top of it.
Thank you. Can you scroll back down to the...
The table?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's easier to digest.
I know.
It doesn't look as scary.
It's just 2023 was all of them. So now the rest of the year is a whole.
We've got a lot to do in 2023.
Big year.
I... Yes, it is a big year. So that was all 2023. There is a lot that's going into that year. And of course, Commissioner Hawkins gets to handle that piece because that is going to be... She's taking over as chair for 2023. But of course, I should be here still to help them. 2024, of course, is to continue that work, and we do want to work on the civilian review board, see if there's any improvement we can make there. We're aware that there have been challenges with having... Keeping that board full of commissioners and keeping attendance up. We do know that that's been an issue, and they do serve a very valuable purpose. And I've always been very impressed with the work they've done and with their recommendations. 2025, of course, we want to continue evaluating budgetary allotment for the CIT teams, make sure that the CIT professionals are... That the program has the funding it's needed to keep those professionals in place to continue doing the work they're doing and also for the victim advocates. And then 2026, review the, of course, the phase one recommendations, see what else is still out there that has not been completed or is not in progress, determine what needs to be addressed, if there are any hangups, if we need to reevaluate those recommendations, adjust them in any way, maybe call them successfully completed. Fingers crossed. 2027, we want to work with... Continue working with Salt Lake City Police Department to participate in that implicit bias survey. And I do suspect it's going to take some time to get that implicit bias survey drafted and submitted to the entirety of the agency and then to see what those results are to parse out that data, right? To follow up on any of those recommendations. Sounds like a very body of work. I have... Let me ask a question. I know that I'm not here to ask you questions tonight, so perhaps I'll do so rhetorically and you could let me know your thoughts in future conversations you have. But I wonder what your feelings are for any of you who've been here from the beginning of this conversation. What do you see for the future of this body? And we've committed a lot of time, energy, and heart, extracurricular time, a lot of the full-time work that you're all doing in the community anyway. It's... We've asked you for a while. More maybe equivalent in time to the Planning Commission, but even that, I'm not quite sure. So I wonder what you see of... And perhaps like a few different iterations. Maybe you want to keep going and you think this is sustainable with the, you know, there's a tenure, so that you know what you're getting in for, unlike your Planning Commission or other missions where you could be on for 10, 15 years if you need to. Maybe it's an incorporation into some facet of a city division or department that you envision. I'm really interested in what you see, and I'll share that when I think about our DEI team, I, on one hand, could see the value in creating a department. On the other hand, coming out of the mayor's office shifts that department director's authority to convene with every other department in the city, loses that mayor's directive. And so there's... At this point, I feel that there's the greatest value in having the DEI team in our office. But those are the kind of iterative future conversations that one of the benefits of the department level is it's much harder for a future mayor to undo that work. So I think through those trade-offs and those different organizational scenarios, I have so much gratitude and respect for the time that you've put in to this work for the last couple of years. And I respect that you have a lot else going on in your life, and I want... I want this experience to always have been a good one for you, not... Coming from nonprofit realm, volunteers or unpaid employees, you know, we have a bit of a stipend for you, but it's still on top of everything else to do. I'll ask it rhetorically now, but I'm genuinely curious what you see as being the most stable, perpetual existence of this conversation here on Capitol City. And I do appreciate that. Thank you for that. This is definitely hard work, and it's not easy work by any stretch of the imagination. I know everyone... Everybody who's been involved in from the beginning and who's come on board knew has dedicated a lot of time and effort to this, and I will be the first to say this is not easy work at all. It is very difficult delving into policy, reading research articles, really looking at how do we create a better system for everybody in this city. For the future, that's not something we've actually discussed. I will say that we should probably be very cognizant of the... I don't want to say secondary trauma, but I will say that burnout can be very, very real for many of us, and I want to be cognizant of that for our volunteers and for our commission members. We don't want to burn ourselves out. We want to keep us engaged. We want to make sure that this work continues in the direction that we've created and that we're sending it off in. So whether we look at limiting terms, which I always... I am a huge fan of term limits because it creates that diversity of thought, keeps people from getting burned out. Whether we shift it from the mayor's office to a different department, that's a good question. I do think you do need a separate DEI department, though. I think that is absolutely necessary. I've been pushing for it in my law firm because otherwise it will not get done. The only way we reach an equitable future and an equitable present is by having that dedication and having... Dividing up that work between one person who has their own separate work and their own separate duties, we're not going to get anywhere. So I do think a separate dedicated department is going to be necessary if you want to see this work continue and be successful and continue on in the future. I think that's true, but only once the work is fully developed and the... I've seen from a recently developed economic development department in the city and prior to that sustainability, not many years ago, that there's frankly a lot of difficulty in implementing sustainability policies or economic development collaboration cross-departmentally. They don't have the authority to do so. So once we're up and running, I think also being able to staff up to our team that we have is much more capable through my office than a separate department competing against other departments. So I think for the sustainability of this work into the future, that will be a leaving legacy, something I do when maybe I'm towards the end of my time in this role, to walk in security. But right now, the mantle of the mayor's office is really effective in scaling it into the other departments. Right. But I think those kind of... I invite you to have those kind of reflective conversations about the structure, not necessarily, but I do exclude any feedback you had for the DEI team more broadly. Really, the sustainability of this work is so important for perpetuity in this city. If I can ask you, next year, not next month necessarily, take on this contemplation.
It's all right. I'll just initially say I like the invitation of the EDI because it has that support of the formal and informal authorities being under your group. I like that for this body too. I think having your support and the council's support for our work in understanding the value of this work gives it a lot of instant legitimacy within the city. And it's in that... It makes it pretty easy to go and have conversations around the city. I'm on C-Rat, I have some questions about this. Whether people would be as open to that or not, I guess I'm speculating with their current variable. And then I like... I like what you're looking for. So it's already codified in ordinance, right? And then trying to find where we're going to be for the future of perpetuity is very exciting to me because in my experience in law enforcement and any change is kind of terrifying, right? We kind of get stuck in a rut. It's what we like and all now what we can be, what's going to happen. And I think we're just kind of starting to break through that here in our second year where more in the department. I want to be clear that the chief and the leadership have been very open to that, so I'm not implying otherwise. But as that filters through the whole department, we are becoming more and more legitimate and less frightening to the driver's officer out there. And I think that it's a great start, and I'm really excited, really excited to see where we go since we continue to permeate through the whole department. I think it's really good stuff done in the long run. So being thoughtful about the longevity and sustainability of this... So being thoughtful about the longevity and sustainability of this commission is really exciting.
Any other comments? All right. It's definitely something we will, we'll think about for sure. And I agree with everything that Commissioner Underwood mentioned. Any other questions or comments about the five-year priorities? It is a lot. When we saw it written down, I think we all in our, in our meetings ahead of time went, okay, that's a lot.
Hard to condense too.
And I do, I want to say that Moana and Michelle have done an amazing job condensing all of that. And I will say we have not been the most organized commissioners of organizing that data for them. We've just been kind of throwing things at them and saying, and here's another one, and here's something else. And they have been amazing at distilling and condensing all of it into this that you have before you, which is still a lot, but it's, it's more easy to digest than probably what we would have presented, which is here's a pile of stuff we want you to do.
Thanks, Moana and Michelle. And really thank you for this body of work and recommendations. And I want to do everything I can to go ahead and early on, what to be processed from a policy perspective. And Chief, thank you for giving us plenty of this big map, can't hear it growing our big map and putting them as sustainable funding for the disability disimbo.
Yep. And I think if there are other questions, we can move on to Chief Brown's update.
And I'm sorry, the city council shifted their Tuesday meeting in election night to right now. So I will excuse myself. Chief, I've seen you three times today. Thank you.
Thanks for seeing you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, you're up, Chief Brown.
All right. We have a slide deck.
Yes, I do. Let me pull it up right now. Where's my share screen? Why don't I have shares? Do you see? My not screen, my share screen? Sorry, y'all. Of course, I can't, I'm good. Okay, there it is.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, let me have two of these screens.
He'll be here.
All right, Commissioners, thank you. I can't tell you how nice it is to be in person and see you and laugh and read body language and talk. And I can't do so much more than that on a Zoom or WebEx or whatever it may be. So it really is nice to be together with you, talk about some of these very, very important issues. Tonight, we wanted to kind of update you on four different things. We wanted to introduce our full-time recruiter. Next slide, there you go. We wanted to update on diversity trainers in our selection process. We wanted to talk about the findings of our material non-compliance on body one cameras. That sounds like a whole lot, but it is a whole lot. But we'll break that one down as we get into that topic. And then we want to talk about our annual report on our Kalia accreditation. Okay? Commissioners, as you know, one of the recommendations, and I think last report it was yellow. Maybe it was red, but we were working on getting a full-time recruiter because that was so important to what we were trying to do at the high watermark. We were down ninety-two officers in twenty twenty-one. That's a lot. So we came to you and we basically said, we would love to have your support for a recruiter. And now this recruiter, we asked for two positions. We asked for an outreach officer and we asked for a recruiter. You graciously saw the value of that and supported it. And so we thank you. It's now come to full fruition that we have Dorothy Rhodes Hadoff, Hadlock, Hadoff? Hadlock, as our officer. Have you met her?
I met with this officer, Hadlock.
Yeah, that's, that is.
She's doing some great work. I'm looking forward to working with her on some of the community outreach. She's already got going on, really some work.
Yeah, she's, she's, she's doing great work.
She's awesome.
And then, and then the second part of that was this recruiter. And this is Alana Lamb. She's now hired. She's been in place for about two months. She's actually is an employee of HR. We didn't want to do paid efforts. So she is assigned to the Salt Lake City Police Department and she's working with our department to recruit or to help our recruitment in all efforts. So I, we can bring her over and introduce her sometime, but she couldn't make it tonight. But this is your vision, our ask, coming to fruition and putting something like that to help us. So we're excited about that.
We're excited about that.
Any questions?
Just comment, Chief. I had the opportunity to meet her when, I think I mentioned this group, the department, and they got the chief interviews. And that was managed by Jessica Weaver, but Alana was there. And I personally was pretty impressed. I liked, so she sat in on a few interviews and I felt like her perspectives in, in both how the questions were asked and the responses is something that we as a board, because I understand it would be very helpful, right? She had great, great observations. And then I did follow up with Ms. Weaver, expressing my opinion about the value of having a member of this board on multiple levels of hiring process, right? She's very open to that.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry to create more work for all of you, but I'm retiring from the board. There you go, again, you see? But I think that's.
You could be a point two, if you know that.
Ms. Weaver was saying that potentially some of the responsibilities for managing those boards will be delegated to this land, right? And I felt like it would be very valuable to have this connection between Michelle as the incoming, I want to get your position right, so manager of this commission.
Equity manager.
Equity manager and this land together to make sure that our presence and voice are a part of that whole process. And I think that that brings so much legitimacy to that process and ensures that we all get the best candidates that are going to work for all of us, including the department and the city, right? So I, I think that that's an important next step that is underway, but I just wanted to discuss that at this point. So I'm impressed with her so far.
Yeah, that's a great point.
How many, how many officers are you down?
Forty-three.
Oh, gosh, that is fantastic.
Making progress. We are.
Actually send your input into the center.
Oh, good.
Really?
Nice.
And I can multiple ask questions. That is great.
Fantastic.
Yeah, we, we have sixty-six recruits in some sort of training right now. So that's either the academy or FTO, but that's a lot of officers that are getting ready to hit the streets. Now, we're not done. We're going to hire another class in January of twenty. Another class in May, and then we'll pick up any good lateral officer that we can find that meets our standards.
In your class, in your January class, what are you looking for?
This is a new hire. We're looking for very qualified candidates to long step up and do this whole job and be a part of this profession. So yeah, we're looking for great candidates.
So I mean, in the field work or, because I know some people who want to, who want to take that, that step.
Just tell them to go online and fill out the application. We'll go from there. Just want good people.
I think that's especially exciting, giving, given the next item on the agenda about the diversity training.
Right.
So to have such a chunk of the office coming in, understanding your vision, my, and also that perspective about community before they ever get the road, start doing the right way right up front, I think is a, is a huge advantage in the long run.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
All right, next slide. The next thing I'd like to talk about is our diversity and inclusion presentations and training. Again, this is another recommendation. This one is, is taking some time, but it's taking time because we want to do it. It's that important. So we now have had three presentations. We had one from Equity Utah, Equality Utah. We had one from True Empowering and we had one from Legal Equity Advocates. And we had Commissioner Davis with us, we had Commissioner Hawkins with us. And we went and listened to their presentation. They did a great job. They came in and talked about how they felt like they could add to and bring value to these trainings. But what we found after listening to all three is they all really had some strengths. And we felt like, wow, maybe we could take the best of each of those groups and kind of mold it into what we're looking for. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And I'd like to report back that we've put everything together, but I think, and we'll talk to these groups, but maybe there's a shared training element to this because they all have some really good, they represent different groups, they have their strengths. There are things that we want to bring into the culture of our department, but I don't know if we want to put all the eggs in one basket. I think we'd like to maybe spread them out and bring them all onto, into this. So Moana and Michelle, we're going to keep talking, but we may come back with a presentation that says this is going to be a combined effort.
I think that makes a lot of sense. You don't want to over, over stimulate with too many presentations at once. It does make a lot of sense.
So, but yeah, that's kind of the direction we're going, direction we're going. We'll have more, more to present hopefully in December. Any questions on that?
If I have a question?
Yeah.
Could you please describe to us the three groups that you are mentioning? I am aware of Equality Utah, but if you could speak to the two other groups and give us sort of like a landscape of which communities or which element of diversity and inclusion was included?
Okay, so you know Equality Utah, right, Commissioner Bernard?
I do.
Okay. They brought something, you know, that what they brought to the table is really important and we felt that would be something, a component of training we would like to have as well. Izzy Tasinga, do you remember Izzy? He was a police officer for many years. Izzy and his team kind of brings, he's been in law enforcement, but then HPI part. And that's a big part of our community. And so he had kind of a real strength in talking with that. And then the Legal Equity Advocates was a group, I don't remember, at Chicago, I believe.
True Empower.
True Empowering, okay, yeah, yeah. They came in and they had more of a traditional presentation about law enforcement and how, how some groups have been marginalized and how we can reach out. So it was like, I don't know how to pick. They were all really good without that. Maybe we can just pick parts of all of them. But that was the groups they represented and that's kind of how we felt. They all did a fantastic job. So we as a commission, as a group, started talking about how we could take all three of them and build them into what we want to do here. The next part was is to find people from our communities that could help us teach and train that as well. So some of these were outside groups, but we have people in our communities would be very, that would want to step up and help us teach this.
And I'll just add for, to the chief too, there were people, so there's NHPI people that were presenting for legal equity, but also in True Encouragement, they had a local person who was Black African-American too. And then they're identified as Black African-American too. So all of the presenters or participants were either from those communities that they were talking about the history of policy or represented them. So that also in addition to what the chief was saying, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you. That helped.
Okay, next topic, next slide. All right, we wanted to talk about our body one camera, where we're at. The Salt Lake City PD, and we've talked a lot about this, but the Salt Lake City PD, we conduct internal audits on our officers and their use of the body worn cameras. Now, we used to, the mayor's left, but we used to do two random audits per week. So we'd go through randomized, pick out some case numbers, review them. But out of five hundred and fifty officers, that's only, what, a hundred and four a year? And the mayor kind of challenged me and said, hey, you can do better than that. So we now pick two videos from every officer in a random order. So there's five hundred and fifty, so it's over eleven hundred videos a year that we review. So it comes up, it goes to their supervisors, they, they pull up the cases, they review them, they look at for compliance for policies, making sure they're tagged and audited. And I'm going to let Andy talk a little bit about that because Andy has actually done these audits. Me as the chief, I haven't, but he's done a lot of them. And he's going to talk just a bit about what we expect officers to do and how and what that much like to be in compliance.
Absolutely. So the expectation for each of the supervisors as they're auditing these videos is that they watch the video throughout its entirety. They review every case report that's attached to that video and then they review all of the catalog to make sure that there's no inconsistencies with the reports and with what you're seeing on the video.
The catalog is dispatch information.
Dispatch information, exactly. So once the body camera was reviewed, now they're looking for, was it tagged properly? Did they put the correct case number with that video? Did they document properly that they recorded their video for their interaction? Did they document properly in their report that they either muted or went off on purpose? Or one of the exceptions that's listed in either ordinance or state statute. Some of those exceptions are if they're having a private conversation with an officer or supervisor, they can deactivate for that or mute their camera. Another one, there's some protocols for location, like hospitals. There's an expectation of privacy in hospitals and mental health clinics or dealing with victims, specifically victims of sexual assault. There's a protocol for that as well, so they can mute or stop recording altogether. So the supervisors will continue to make sure that those recordings are happening. If they did go off or if they did mute, that they documented properly why they did that. Next, we're looking for, was there a recording? And if there wasn't one, when there should have been according to the catalog or the dispatch logs, why didn't that happen? If it happened on purpose for some reason, or if we see a pattern that it's been happening regularly, that will be documented in the audit report. And those findings are typically a finding of serious misconduct. That will be submitted to internal fair review. If they see that it's once or twice here, it's not intentional, it's not willful. Typically, that's handled through a coaching council by their supervisor or a retraining. So the officer knows that that can't continue, what the expectation is from then on and how to follow that procedure properly. So after that point, the audit by the supervisor is completed and it's submitted to the audit review unit. And then that is filed into an annual report that's submitted for the Kalia accreditation.
So, I'm sorry. So when the supervisor does his assessment and you said, there's, there's, there's a fraction. He goes through a coaching process with the officer, brings it back online. What happens after the second fraction?
So once we find a repeated pattern, that becomes a pattern of serious misconduct. And that is again referred to our, that can go one of two directions as long as it's not willful or knowingly that they're doing that. Because that becomes a more serious question. That can be turned back to the division, the division commander can determine what level of discipline is going to occur at that time. It may.
So the division commander is all the supervising, we did the evaluation.
Sure. So that will be our practice for our candidates.
And Commissioner Johnson, that's a great question. When you say, we look at the video, when you say pattern, what we do is we go back for thirty days. So you look at the video and go, oh, there's a, there's a violation. We go back for thirty days and start looking at all the videos to see if it was just a simple mistake or if this is an habitual thing that keeps happening. So it's kind of built into that process to go back and look. So that's. So, that's...
That was a good question.
Yeah, I didn't want to deceive somebody. Yeah, yeah. So, we put a lot of effort into it. I think it's good. We have found consistently that officers are doing a great job tagging them, marking them, saying why they're going on mute, documenting those things in the report. And I'm happy to say that we have had no serious violations that have been turned over in internal affairs.
This year or since you implemented this year?
This year, yeah, this year. Well, that's good.
Good job, good news.
That's a lot of work. I have actually gone out with the officers, I have a camera, and let me tell you, they're very stressful situations. Remember to turn that on, to, I mean, it's, it's, it becomes habit whenever you do it, but it's a lot of work. And I, and I just want to give a shout out to the officers, they do a fantastic job. But if we expect it, we need to inspect it, and we continue to do it. Nice.
Yes, Commissioner Satini.
So, with the good news, are they incentivized?
Like?
Are they celebrating?
How do we celebrate?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know. Do you got a recommendation?
Because we're always having, right? On the, on the police department, how we celebrate. It's just not going out there.
Yeah, I like that. Let me pick it up and give it some thought.
Is there, like, inserted a couple of videos, like, boo hoo, you documented properly 100 videos, you get dinner out, I don't know.
They do that every month.
Something kind of incentivizes it.
Let me give that some thought, I really like it.
You really should.
And I'll say it came from...
You should say it from, yes. We may make that a formal recommendation, that you produce an incentivization program for many of these, these things. Because it is a difficult, it's a difficult ask to put on officers to remember all these statutes and all these laws and all these rules, all these policies, and remembering your body cam, and when to turn it off, when to keep it on, what to say, what to do. And it's in a very stressful situation where most of us would just hide under a table.
Hey, you know, we have a, we have a career path program, and I'm just spitballing here. So, if officers go for X amount of years without a crash, they get, they get points towards a bonus that they get in this career path. So, maybe if they continually document properly, maybe there's something in there, I don't know. Definitely, definitely.
Right.
Then it becomes all about behavior.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll come back and have some ideas for you.
Please do. What would be a good timeframe, February or March?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Want to give me enough time.
Last one. I like any incentivizing, I like your median idea, and I, I also, when the chief comes to this body and says, our officers are fulfilling your professional responsibilities, that is also a sense, right? The, our, our police officers have, boy, their reputations are really taken beating, right? And in, in some cases, we know that there are problems and we need to do better. And what officers take their professional reputation very seriously. And to, to, to create a set of expectations that, quite frankly, this board also participated in, in terms of making requests for audits and everything, and what some of the details of how those officers are operating. You know, we contributed to that. And then to have them meet that, and in, and with zero failures, sends a lot of pride back to the department. Having the chief able to acknowledge that to a board like this, it's part of that incentive, it's that, that internal driver. Chief got a problem with those guys? No, I don't know. You should, you should. Thank you very much. It was exciting, the magnitude of those body camera requests and the issues surrounding that. That was a lot of work to come up with, with policies that both the community and law enforcement and some of the state law can work with. This is a big moment, actually. Well, I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you. And then last but not least, this is our CLIA accreditation. We have, we signed that document on May 6th, 2022. So, we are, as we've talked about, commissioners accredited by the CLIA standards. I've included a copy of this for your review, so you can take a look at it. But, but that's a big deal too. It comes with a lot of hard work to make sure we maintain those proofs and those standards so that we can be recognized as planned in one of the few agencies that has obtained this. The only, I think it's the second agency in the state, but I believe in all law enforcement across the country, it's less than 5%.
Congratulations, yeah. Are you having a party?
We're going to have another party.
See, Commissioner Satini and I automatically go to, we're like, what's the party? Where are you going to celebrate this?
And then I'll plan on December to bring the overall overview.
Yes, yes.
CLIA is a big deal too, I'm sorry to keep emphasizing that, but the mic's underselling it a little bit. That is a significant investment by the department, and to have those auditors come in and go through everything, it's a big deal.
Well done, thank you, Commissioner Underworden, for emphasizing that. Thank you, Chief Brown, for all of your work.
And then just one more thing. I, we used to have a community advisement boards, and through the pandemic, I kind of put it on hiatus. And that was a group that would come in and talk to me directly as the chief. We started that back up, Kenya's on it. There are several, Pastor Davis, Randy Farmer, a lot of representation throughout the city. But I wanted to open that up, if you, if any commissioners would like to come and sit and be a part of that, and kind of see and hear what we're talking about, you're more than welcome.
When are those, yeah?
We have one coming up in December. We'll, we'll get the invite out. But yeah, it's, it's one hour, it's the hard conversation, it's from the communities that we need to hear from. Talk about how we can do things better, so. Okay, please do. Okay. Anyway.
I do.
Any questions, additional questions or comments for Chief Brown? Okay, seeing that, thank you so much. I appreciate your work on this and efforts.
Make sure you bask in this success. Oh, there's a lot more work to do. True, but take, take a moment to bask in this, celebrate.
Yes, and truly, the work is never done, so take your victories where you get them.
Exactly. I'll bask it on to the officers, they're here.
If you need a piece for your celebration, let me know. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the budget request for providers, and we have Ashley Cleveland and Wendy Isom.
So, I have to say, I'll have me at I-7.
That's fine. Right, and Commissioner Underworden is, is leaving us as well.
They're leaving him?
No, no, you're good.
Makes me hang in.
So, yes, Ms. Cleveland and Ms. Isom, who wants to go first, or who's presenting?
Together.
Together?
The button on the slide.
As I have this, the two, so this is the, this way.
Which one are you also?
Okay, good evening, if I can.
Good evening.
For anyone, a little weird with this in front of my face, how do you do this long? For anyone who has a friend, my name is Ashley Cleveland. I am the deputy director for community outreach in Mayor's Office. I've been here about a year and a half. Chief Brown, I've known you for forever now, since I've been a Salt Lake City resident. I'm a city planner by trade, and I just really need to care about community engagement. So, over the past year and a half, I have been tasked with prepping a lot of the engagement around Fleet Block and natural development. And I've been working on a regular basis for families who are related to the people depicted on murals at Fleet Block. And then another kind of working on engaging relationships. So, today, I'm here to talk to you about Fleet Block, but also to distill it down to engagement with families, some of the recommendations that they have longstanding, not just for Fleet Block or for how we can be a better engaged police department and building some safety nets for them. As Lynn was pointing out to me, as I've been with the program for past few months, it's been an absolute pleasure. We already have some great policies in place, we just have a little bit of tweaks and a couple of suggestions to make that a little bit more robust. It's a journey I'm going to take. So, mental health interventions for negative police interactions in SLC. Okay, so why we're here? We of course are here as a pair of witnesses to talk about just police in general and how we can be better engaged for ourselves.
Can you make it for the screen?
Thank you, there we go. Awesome, okay. So, just a reminder, as while we're here, we must not forget the standard of Black Lives Matter for little odd things. This is my daughter, she's five, but no more. Let us talk in conversations about inequity, justice for Black Brown bodies, not in a race to protect, heal and create change, community, why? So, where this landed, half-hazardly, is we have a block in Salt Lake City that was used for our fleet vehicles for storage for over 20 years. This has been a focus of redevelopment discussion for the city for a multitude of administrations. And the planning department has wanted to, you know, develop it for a while. Right now, it is zoned as public land, and the city and this administration is wanting to rezone it for Form Based Urban Neighborhood 3. We already have a Form Based Urban Neighborhood 1 and 2 in the Grand Avenue and Central City districts. This just creates a bigger umbrella for mixed use. Now, I attached some links, if you want to go back and see how the conversation is going, and some, you know, interesting articles just to talk about general community, community. So, you know, during 2020 and, you know, the COVID-19 sweep, since then, the space has become a healing space to not just the families who go and visit their loved ones there, but everyone at a regional level. I go there myself when having hard days or just wanting to, you know, remember why we're having these conversations and pushing ourselves forward even when we're tired. The families and other community units come together to make sure that the mural space has flowers, they go and mow the lawn, they put candles down, Audrey's been there a few times, put flowers up as well. So, that's what it's looking like now. From August 2021 until April 2022, the Mayor's Office worked directly with living relatives tied to the murals. Part of this work included bi-monthly meetings with Melanie Davis of the Black Commissions, Frankie Baines for art healing activities, and our own Salt Lake City Arts Councils for memorial art case studies. So, our Arts Council was around, would be great to get to a space of talking about the future, which is very hard, to give some examples of other great memorial spaces that exist nationwide. So, that's what they were involved in the conversation around. And also to provide some information on funding, because family members were like, well, you know, how do we even pay for this if we wanted to continue this conversation? So, several families were included, and their goal was to preserve the memorialization of their loved ones in some form in the future development that will occur in this area. So, first and foremost, I think the biggest hurdle we had to get over is that not only Black Lives Matter, that the family and the community that's there, they mostly just said, well, you know, since the city owns it and it's public land, why don't you just donate the building itself to people who are experiencing homelessness? Like, I don't understand, you know, why can't we do the Detroit model, just donate the building as is? We had to, you know, kind of fight a little bit internally and talk about, you know, how the building isn't just repaired and safe to be inhabited, you know? And if we love people who are experiencing homelessness, it wouldn't be safe to have them in that building. So, that was a big hurdle to get over. The end product of all of this was a joint letter with the Salt Lake City Arts Council and the families. It was a formal recommendation letter to the Mayor's Office outlining what they would like to see and also what they would not like to see, so that we could have some guardrails for development. Now, normally, from a city planning perspective, you know, letters of recommendation to the mayor, you know, the mayor can respond if they're a kind mayor, and I did, of course, but apparently. But it's normally just, you know, given in good faith. One thing I'm advocating for is that this letter be used in development agreements or when we start developing teams, we talk about what's actually going to happen in the future. So, that letter will be live and publicly available on the Fleet Block website that is going through or moving up right now. So, in culmination, in summary, we had 10 families that were contacted, we had seven participants, four or five were regular leaders, meaning I could call on them to make sure that reminders went out, make sure that notes were circulated, and checking in with people when they weren't available. This is the outline of the process, you know, talk about what I did every month or so over the time that I would engage with them. And then we went to city council in April, just to talk about how the overall conversation was going. So, in August and September, we had an introductory meeting, and of course, I had to build trust there. Some of the activists I knew on a personal level, just for being in the community, but when I became a government employee, that definitely created a block between us, you know, for good reason. But we had to, we just had deeper conversations, and it looked like walks, it looked like getting coffee, it looked like playdates, it looked like, you know, just being a shoulder to cry on when we needed it. And I just asked, you know, would you like to engage with someone like that, would you think it was helpful? And they said, you know, right now, we're experiencing so much grief that we can't even see anything else. But we can't even just, we're just getting triggered all the time, and so we can't have conversations that are effective. And so, I said, you know, would an option be to receive youth counseling that I'm not a part of? Will you walk and process your own feelings? And after you do that, maybe you can have a meeting later in the month, will you talk about what you'd like to see in the future? We'll just go real slow, real gentle until we get there. So, from October to March, we had two meetings per month. Like I said, we had art therapy, visioning exercises, we did journaling, we did art prompts, just to eat the nervous system down to a level where we can have a conversation. So, where that ended is they wanted to look at policy and say, you know, how do we do this again? How do we make sure this is available for people other than us? Because all of the people like for this not to happen again, tag is no longer productive space, and, you know, we can't predict the future. So, last month, I was here, and I pretty much went through in great detail what we, what we experienced together with the practitioners, and, you know, just who the participants were, we talked about who the practitioners were, because I think that was a mid, mid part of cultural competency and having good conversations around healing and, you know, what does the sort of justice look like? What exactly is police brutality? How does that affect other family members in back coverings? Um, because unfortunately during this time that I was with the uh family members, you know, um, we lost a few then during our um engagement. That's called like a secondary tertiary uh effect, so, you know, we asked if one was lost to things by sometimes other family members can't weather the storm of processing that grief and, you know, they, they have further detrimental actions that they experience. So we lost two other family members during this time, unfortunately just suicide. Um, we also covered last month, the ideologies of dispute resolution and community care in established systems. I think this is something that, you know, we have seen during COVID being really, really important. It's really the love of your neighbor, checking in on each other, making a workout, making sure that they can translate materials is just the strength in our, our community. Um, we also looked over the history of our Victims Advocate Program, thank you, thank you so much to Ms. Exum. And, you know, we really delved into what policies have been added, because a lot of these families, um, you know, I feel like these discussions really ran out in two thousand fifteen for sure, but a lot of them, since they hadn't engaged since that time or between then and now, they hadn't even known all the great things that we have been putting into place from two thousand fifteen and now. You know, they were just blinded by, you know, moving through court cases and just being upset and all that good stuff, so, not all the good stuff, but, you know, being upset. So we were able to kind of lay out a timetable of when all these great policies uh were enacted. Um, so all that, uh, we need to go over to here.
Um, thank you and thank you, Ashley, for bringing um some of these discussions forward. So when the participants in the arts meetings kind of came forward and said counseling or therapy that was very specific to their needs was hard to access. And that is absolutely true with how our system builds resources. Um, when someone's having uh that knock on the door with a police officer two in the morning to let them know there's been an interaction and our family members deceased, our system is not built to respond well. And so often the resources we get out for the families were not as kind as they should be. They're not as trauma-informed, um, historically. Even uh our police department, when we would bring people in to watch the body camera footage, um, learn from that process to make that trauma-informed and more compassionate, um, warning and preparation before you walk through that door and caregiving after you are held at the work felt very, very different as we maneuvered through it. And so some of what Ashley was saying, Matt Teague was identifying, um, very much was that request for no barrier access to what they needed. And lovely, um, phase in my career is watching the victim services is starting to do that in different sectors. We've stopped maybe just building a new shelter and telling domestic violence victims, go there. Instead, they've started looking at funding sources that says, survivor, give them to us and tell us what you need and we'll have this little pot of money here and maybe you don't want to come into shelter, maybe you want rent paid to stabilize you where you're at. And so part of the movement uh Ashley was talking about in, in twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen have been some movements towards much more survivor-driven models. And so that is kind of part of what we're here to chat about is um trying to create a more survivor-driven model for the population of individuals that are having these negative interactions.
So, uh, like we said, the families, they had a very positive experience um in our engagement. Um, I still reach out to them regularly and they're excited, they're actually excited to see what the future of Fleet Block is going to be. And I'm pretty sure Chief Brown would attest to, you know, when we first had these conversations about Fleet Block back in December of twenty twenty, it was a very different tone, so it's nice to know that they're here, um, here and a half later. Um, so the family made some recommendations to the Victims Advocate Program. Um, Wendy had some uh recommendations based on the family's requests, talking about uh no barrier process to uh access services. And then over the last month, we had a very quick turnaround and we, we delved into what that looked like. So you all asked for, uh, you know, a comprehensive review of the Victims Advocate External Provider Referral Process Policy. Um, you all asked for a recommendation for new victim advocate policy if the new process is approved or funded. And then there's also a request to explore, um, adding the confidentiality to our E five point twelve rule and the ULVC funding structure to the new process with the budget request. Um, I have provided some uh more detailed uh information, um, hopefully they'll be provided in a minute from Moana and Michelle and you guys can look at that at a deeper level, thank you guys for doing that. Um, right now, uh, and, you know, we can speak to this more thoroughly, I kind of just made uh bold notes. Um, but right now, the current process has an application process um through the Utah Office for Victims Crime, um, Victims Reparations. Assist survivors who don't qualify for the Utah Office for Victims Crime funding. Um, there are survivors who might need immediate mental health services and then uh survivors who work through their peer support networks. And there's more detailed information in your uh supplemental materials there. Um, one thing that Wendy was able to highlight was just adding maybe to the top part of the process at the beginning. You know, when we talk about equity inclusion, I think the mayor definitely, you know, hit the nail on the head. We want to work in concert or collaboration for sure, but until we get there, the way these equity inclusion policies are just set in nature, kind of the top-down approach might be a little bit more helpful. Um, so letting providers through an RFP process to ensure larger ranges of skill with virtual nationwide auctions and then create a low-barrier intake process and billing process so that the victims' provider can quickly access services.
So just to quickly give you a summary, um, the Utah Office for Victims of Crime gives great funding and, but it drives a lot of the referrals. For example, if someone is approved and has health insurance, they ask the uh surviving family to pick a provider that's on their health insurance channel so that they can expand the number of sessions. That uh your health insurance would act as a primary right insurance and the Utah Office for Victims of Crime becomes secondary to cover how a pocket or premiums or win sessions while up to be the secondary insurance. They do the same with Medicaid, Medicare. And then if the family that is applying doesn't have either one of those, then it was a much more free ability to go choose the provider that matches them. So we do have lots of survivors that for one reason or another, that process does not take the care of them. Um, their health insurance provider list is not adequate for trauma-informed, for the language they speak, for their transportation needs. They're not in their community, they don't look like the person seeking treatment. And so for many reasons, we have individuals kind of falling out of that. The next option then, um, was to just seek community resources. So then we're starting to look at county-funded programs, state-funded programs, our police department, social worker therapists. And that often does fill a short-term gap, especially when someone's calling at two in the morning, saying, I need to talk to someone now. Um, but as a whole, that has some barriers as well. It's really often comparable to wanting to engage with the police department that has harmed your family. Um, a lot of individuals just, i- it's not even an acceptable ask to request that that be the only referral I can provide to someone. Um, and so this piece adds in that freedom to stop asking a family to grieve, to navigate each of those steps or to have to do the second best treatment option when they need help. And instead to let a survivor drive that resource at the time they need and the marriage they need. And so it was a beautiful discussion with Ashley, just be able to say, why don't we just find the right solution instead of continually trying to help people with the solution we have.
Um, so we also wanted to explore a little bit deeper than your E fifteen rule. Thank you so much, uh, Commissioner Salazar for that recommendation. I think this is a really one of the main concerns that family members had, um, you know, I, I can't help but remember that, you know, when people were calling for the refund of the police or just looking deeper into budgets. Yes, of course, I think a lot of people were like, what do you mean? And, um, you know, it's more so about just resituating these sources uh to outside networks. Um, one of the reasons why I think that is is because, you know, we can do our best by hiring victim advocates and service providers, but there's still that barrier saying, you know, are you going to rat on me essentially? Like, are you going to uh be against me when I'm speaking my truth in regards to my family member who, um, might have been involved in crime? So, um, the, the rule defines advocates in different manners. Um, there's advocacy service providers, there's criminal justice victims advocates, there's a victims advocate which they outline. Um, survivor's information is protected via creative methods, so I think it's really important to outline. I think Commissioner Salazar, you know, reminded us that this is something very big, you know? We're just trying as an administration to really keep track of the even emergent things and also being the leader that's involved right in it in some of the other ways, so I think this is really great of the capital city that we're having these conversations now. Um, the rule also defines that victims communicating with the victims advocate has a privilege to refuse, uh, to disclose and prevent any other person from disclosing a confidential communication. They also have a list of whom they can do that with. Um, the criminal justice advocates can share information for the purpose of providing advocate services and that info can also be shared with and defined as there. And I think that's really helpful, um, for people trying to access services to know where the safe boundaries are for them and where they are actually protected. Um, there are exceptions to this privilege, which has also been outlined here. And of course, like I said, the supplementary materials that we, so these basically gather for you, um, outlines a lot of that.
If I could jump in for just a second on that, um, the best way I build trust with individuals is walking them through that as early into an interaction as possible about what is the difference between privacy and their victims' rights that entitle them to privacy versus what is confidentiality, which is a little stronger and that's more how do we try to uh anonymize data so that someone can't be identified when we do a grant report? And ways to not have to disclose and then up to the better privilege which some entities have. Um, our legislature is trying to craft every legislative session tweaks to this. I don't think we still have a final product anywhere near where it will end up needing to be. But the best way I describe it is right up front with absolute brutal transparency. Um, I tell people every single day, I realize I'm part of the police department and you may not want to share things with me. You may not want to talk to me at all. Um, it may be a one-sided street, it may be, may I just give you a phone number to someone with privilege, with better confidentiality? Um, don't tell me your name. Um, we publicize on every document I can hand out, have a call from a locked number with an anonymous name or just decline to give me a name. Um, you don't need a police report to access those services, so we're always trying to educate ways to still connect with someone if it's not us. And if it is going to be us, absolute brutal transparency about who can access what you shared with me. And then we have a philosophy of creating very, very, very few records on purpose. Um, we choose not to have our conversations with the officers in the room with body cameras rolling. We don't record our interviews. If, if we sit with a survivor who is doing an interview with detectives, we'll set a boundary right up front that's like, this part's going to be recorded and then we'll go to a different room and have a different conversation after the recording is off. So setting those types of boundaries and expectations, um, but then we also document what do we do? We don't document what did the survivor tell me? What did the survivor do? What did the survivor want? Our documents are what did I offer or what did I provide? So, um, when I train my new staff, I teach them to be a little narcissistic. Every statement they write should say, I provided a refer, I shared information and it should not even capture a record of what did the person come to for assistance, say, or do. And so that is one of the methods we're using at this time, but it does tend to stand up well in light of this rule of evidence. Um, we have had one or two hearings, um, in camera reviews where a judge had to decide, can defense access our records?
That's a rule that's under review right now, too, we're working on that one, five oh six.
So we, we've been able to learn, luckily there's a lovely uh National Victims Rights and T C and a very good state of the topic, Customs Rights Law Planet, that give us some very good legal advice and policies and procedures to try to create that.
Is that Heidi Nussell and Alex Allen?
And Paul Cassel and then the National Victims Law Institute and that helped them actually get up and running.
Trying to make it so that the courts let them appear remotely for everything.
No, I think that's beautiful, I, I think that probably in our meeting, when we got together last, I was like, see? That's how you go from being an ally to being a compliment, right? So, uh, why are we, oh, I have to do that. Okay, so why are we here? Uh, to talk about funding structure. Um, one thing that Wendy outlined for me is that the structure is to award approximately two thousand dollars per claim that can depend on the treatment plan created by the provider. Um, during the six months, six months of um engagement that we provided, I want to say the mayor's office probably spent around ten to twelve thousand dollars for several people to participate in group therapy on a monthly basis. Um, one thing Wendy was able to nail down, and I have updated the slide, I'm sorry, uh, we have an average of about five events per year and by events, I just mean negative police interactions. We haven't really defined what that is, but maybe that could be for a later date and it would cost about, I can't see this. Um, it costs, oh yeah, I said that, okay. So in addition to, you know, ten K for taking care of these seven families over six months, that, those seven families were over a course of several years, right? We, we haven't gone back and looked at, you know, five places per year that are referenced here. Um, thirty K seems like an appropriate allocation based off of the claim cost of five events per year. So, in summary, we're trying to build trust, the families have been able to build better relationships with city staff in this specific process, which includes them choosing a room and a health provider. I will say it's had a, you know, a larger effect than just, you know, the mayor's office. There's still some distrust there, I think hopefully as the Fleet Block conversation becomes bigger, that, you know, will broaden that. But I will say that the families have been able to reach out to other city departments and ask some questions, not just the police department, um, which I think is good, you know, and it's building trust at a city-wide level. I, I know at times when the community members who, you know, want to zero in on the police department, I feel like that's just expression of what's happening larger for our society, right? How people coming down the police department, but their issues are more so around their health or poverty or youth and family services. And one of the things that I feel I've been seeing over the past few years by being an American, a Black American during this time, is just the breakdown in our system nationally there, where we're just putting everything on our cool tops to use the first, first line of work when there's bigger conversations that need to be had. Um, so yeah, um, one more time, I'm gonna hit it one more time. So all comments are welcome, um, I would love it if you considered these statements, that's what the need is and that's why we are here in front of you right now, okay? So thank you for letting us go.
Any questions?
So the ask, the ask is really thirty K?
Yeah, is that ongoing or one time?
The expectation is ongoing. The expectation is ongoing, um, we expect that healing won't be linear, so even if we have five or six new families requesting assistance, anniversaries will pop up, more new events will pop up, so that, um, hopefully we can craft an RFP that would allow flexibility to help throughout an entire healing process.
Question, sorry, I might have missed a memo, so this, um, resources offered to folks that dealt with a negative experience with the police?
So right now, predominantly, the, the five a year we've been looking at, and, and the majority of who Ashley's been working with, are individuals whose family members were killed in a police shooting, um, and often are going to run into more complications to access traditional victim services. Um, Utah Office for Victims of Crime's criteria often screens those being families out. So broader survivors, we do have more pools of money to be able to help them, um, but for that particular population, they, they fall through different programs that don't need to be.
We'll leave that on the thought, you guys over there, because you're performing the magic, basically.
It's, it's a privilege, um, it's, it's an odd hat to wear and to, um, help individuals advocate a, a system they often don't want to see from here from, or have show up at their door, if you're meeting me, it's usually your, your worst evening, um, and so I, I so value individuals who will work with us, and acknowledge, um, that those who don't feel comfortable deserve really good services from other doors.
Now, was there, was there an existing model for this?
Um, so our, our existing model was to take, uh, and try to access those other actions, but just as a typical victim of a crime, not as a specific policy to address this type of incident.
One charge.
You know, I just hope that, you know, really that's our, you know, PDF as well, because when these conversations were starting in two thousand fifteen, we had, y'all were, you know, completely replaced together in climate, so at least I hope the following procedures will, you know, back to other than that way this one.
So I think the question would be, would you all like to add that, um, to the recommendations for the end of the year, um, like the mayor was talking about the budgetary arrangements to support this, if that is, if that is something, then we can craft that and add that into the, I don't care.
If we, if you have a motion to add that in as a budgetary item, we'll leave it in your discussion.
Motion.
We have a second?
Question.
Yes.
Sorry. So, like, maybe, how many are of your staff?
So at the moment, um, we are nine, and we have five vacancies, um, but that is part-time and full-time staff, so that is, it's about the equivalent of twelve full-time staff.
That covers all of Solid City? A second.
Second.
Do you know, have a forum? We don't have a forum, but we can vote, we can add that, and when we vote for December's meeting, with whatever the chief of everyone brings in, that's right, we'll add that.
So let's add it to our, our, uh, agenda. We'll add that to our agenda for December for a full vote.
Yes.
Perfect.
If the meetings will go to speak, what do you want the burden to say?
Um, the thirty thousand dollar request to be included as an ongoing budgetary item of the South City Budget, as suggested by, um, Ms. Exum and Ms. Cleveland. And I will say, five, uh, well, five oh six is in the works, there's a draft, um, oh gosh, we just had that meeting on Monday, and I can't remember if we voted to send it up to the support board, and let them decide what to do with it, because we also have Rule eleven and the appellate rules that handles how those documents are handled on appeal. So there's a recent case that came out where they were, they were handed to the defendant and defendant's counsel, and that created a lot of uproar, um, but we have some pretty strong language that we hope is protective, we've been working on it for about a year, but it does include a pretty hefty motion, uh, procedure, and some, some burdens and standards in accessing those confidential records. I have been neck-deep in victim work over a while, thank you. Okay, uh, subcommittee chair updates, um, Moana, have you received updates from the chairs of training, policy, and practices?
I think we'll have that for, not, I think, we'll have that for update.
That's perfect, and I don't have any updates for school safety, it's been just, Ms. Newell working on.
Chipping away, chipping away, everybody's been doing.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, um, we did move the open dialogue to the end of the meeting, um, this is now the end of the meeting, does any, do any of the commissioners have any topics or issues they want to discuss during this open dialogue session? Chris McDonald, you're kind of looking around. Okay, do we have any members of the public at all present, Moana? No? Then it means you don't have any public comment. All right, well then, um, if there is nothing more, then I want to thank everybody, is, uh, do we have a motion to close this meeting?
Motion.
Second, right, um, and we don't have a forum, but I think we have consensus to close the session.
All right. Thank you, everybody.